I pledge to the Supremity of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please back your heads. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for all that you have given us. We thank you for this gorgeous day today, our first day of spring. Lord, we just ask that you be with us, be with our hearts, be with those in this room, and be with our families who are watching and at home, Lord. Also be with the first responders who are out protecting our city, Lord. We just ask that you keep them safe, and it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Okay. This time, go and ask for quorum. City Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor.
And next item is approval of the minutes. So if they, from the last regular meeting, if they have no corrections are offered, then they shall remain as approved. So, any corrections there?
There was one item concerning the infrastructure agreement. I think the incorrect commissioners were listed for the motion second. Commissioner Cessna was one who motioned, and then Commissioner Langraff seconded the motion.
Note that for correction. Okay. On public comment, so if anyone is here to talk about anything, please, we just ask that you come up to the mic, state your name for the record, and if there's nothing on the agenda that you wish to speak on, that's the time to come up. So, you can come up now. Seen no one? Go ahead and move on to the next item.
Mayor Commissioners, the governing body is asked to consider and allow the mayor to proclaim April 1st, 2024, as James Southern Day in Garden City, Kansas.
Mayor, I make the motion that we approve the proclamation as presented.
Second.
Okay, this one's moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass. And I'll go ahead and read that. Is that... Okay. Whereas James Southern began working for the city of Garden City as a firefighter one on March 4th, 2003, and whereas James Southern served as a firefighter lieutenant and battalion chief, and whereas James Southern provided unwavering commitment and exemplary leadership within the Garden City Fire Department and in the community, and whereas James Southern is retiring from employment with the city of Garden City on April 1st, 2024, after 21 years of service, and whereas James Southern has played a crucial role in the safety and well-being of the residents of Garden City, demonstrating tireless dedication to the protection of life and property, setting a standard of excellence for all members of the Garden City Fire Department. Now therefore, I, Manny Ortiz, Mayor of the city of Garden City, do hereby proclaim April 1st, 2024, as James Southern Day in Garden City, Kansas, and urge all citizens to acknowledge and express their sincere appreciation and thanks for his service to the community, his leadership, and his tireless efforts in safeguarding the lives and property of the residents of Garden City. Signed and sealed this 19th day of March 2024. Where do you want me?
And, uh, I think I should look with you, and then I think one, one, everybody's good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good picture. Let's hit the Mayor James first, because everybody's looking at us really fast.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
That's the only authority here. He's official, bro. The other side, yes. He looks stupid. This side, go ahead. He's got some. We gotta, she's part of the family.
Are you ready? One, two, three.
I have a hundred.
One.
Man trying to find the longest time to find a justice on white.
Yeah.
Ready for item B? Mayor and Commissioners, the governing body is asked to consider and allow the mayor to proclaim March 19th, 2024, as Levita Roman Rupp Day in Garden City, Kansas.
I move that we approve the proclamation as presented.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass. Okay. Do we have Levita family? Okay. I'll read the...
Yeah, several people.
I'll read the proclamation and...
Yeah, go ahead and do that, and then we can maybe have somebody come up, or several of them come up and join you for a picture.
All right. So whereas Levita Roman Rupp began her professional work with Catholic social charities in 1975, and whereas during her career, Levita played an essential role in establishing the Garden City Office for Catholic Social Services, now Catholic Charities of Southwest Kansas, and whereas Levita was an indispensable source of wisdom, information, and expertise, touching countless lives through her work in migration and refugee services, and whereas Levita's legacy is intricately woven into the tapestry of the community's history as she championed the accommodation of the vulnerable and displaced dating back to helping Southeast Asian refugees in the 1970s, and eventually helping refugees from around the globe. For decades, she dedicated her life's work to helping others negotiate the complex immigration system and tirelessly advocated for those who found a home in Southwest Kansas. And whereas in all that she did, Levita exuded unwavering faith, patience, empathy, and justice, and whereas Levita's passing on February 15th, 2024, leaves a void in the lives and hearts of many current and former Garden Cityans who benefited from her passion, professional skills, and personal qualities. Now therefore, I, Manny Ortiz, Mayor of the city of Garden City, do hereby proclaim March 19th, 2024, as Levita Roman Rupp Day of remembrance in Garden City, Kansas, and urge all citizens to acknowledge and express their sincere appreciation for the legacy of love, passion for justice, and deep sense of humanity she modeled for our community through her work with refugees and others navigating legal immigration services. Signed and sealed this 19th day of March, 2024.
Do we have some folks here to celebrate Levita? Want to come up and join the mayor for a picture? Everybody's over. You all are the same. Item C, Mayor and Commissioners, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from Debbie Reynolds with CASA to waive the sign ordinance and right-of-way restrictions and to have a banner and 10 pinwheels placed at Third Street and Kansas Avenue from April 15th through the 21st.
I move that we approve the request as presented.
I second.
Okay, it's been first and second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Item D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the waiver request, or a request from Lindsey Kugler with Garden City Community College to waive the sign ordinance and right-of-way restrictions and to have a banner placed at Third Street and Kansas Avenue from April 10th through the 13th.
I move that we approve the request.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
I'm going to report to the city manager, or item A, give a presentation of the current status of the Neighborhood and Development Services Agreement. Are you giving this verbally? Either way.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. At the February 6th, 2024, City Commission meeting, the governing body approved a consultant-type agreement between the city and the county for neighborhood and development services related to planning, donating inspections and code enforcement. This drafted agreement reflected what the city believed to be a good-faith negotiation, as well as the intent of both governing bodies at the time. Then at your March 5th meeting, staff provided an update regarding some additional meetings that both the city and county staff had had, and during those meetings, county staff provided alternative ideas. That last meeting that we had between the two staffs was held on Thursday, March 14th. During that meeting, county staff proposed an alternative to the consultant-type agreement, which to date, the Board of County Commissioners has not taken action on. However, it is anticipated, and it did happen, at the county's meeting yesterday, at their work session during their budget, that they got some updates related to those current kind of staff negotiations that have been going on since that February 6th City Commission meeting. Staff will continue to update you all on the status of those discussions, if and when the county commissioners may take up the proposal you approved and sent over for their consideration, and/or any alternatives to that that are presented by Finy County staff. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. They talked about it kind of very broadly at their work session yesterday. It was a pretty extensive budget work session, but it was one of the topics that came up, so.
Was the consensus from them to move forward with not going, I guess, with their own direction?
Yeah, so the conversation yesterday, again, it was very high level. Probably was a three- to five-minute conversation. So I don't know that I got a good sense of what the direction from the entire Board of County Commissioners was, but they talked about kind of taking over some of those services in their entirety, instead of contracting with the city to provide all of, all four of those services. So that was kind of the direction that they talked about, but what that would likely, their request was an additional staff person to help facilitate some of that. So obviously, they're at the beginning portion of their budgeting process, just as you all are as well, but that was kind of the high-level, high-level update that they provided.
So Danielle, are we operating under any agreement right now, or just kind of in a limbo at this point? Or do we still have an agreement in place, just because they haven't ratified something? Or...
Yes, we are still operating under the existing agreement that we have in place. So we really haven't changed our processes or anything like that up to this point, and we won't until something gets codified by both governing bodies. It's just a different path than what we had talked about at that February meeting, which was more of that consultant-type agreement. This kind of shifts that into them taking over and having a more active role in some of those processes, instead of consulting with the city to do some of that work.
Danielle, just for clarity, for, I guess, everybody's benefit, but you used the word "they" and "them," and we're really kind of, there's two groups there right now. There's the Board of County Commissioners, who have yet not taken action, and that's in there's county staff that's proposing as part of budget hearings, if I'm hearing you right, a concept. So when you say "they" talked about, whichever version of "they" talked about that you gave, is that "they," the Board of County Commissioners? Is that "they," the county staff? Is that "they," the collective?
"They" is referencing the county staff discussions that we've been having over the last several months.
Any reaction from the county commissioners as to the desire to see the agreement that the city commissions passed, or is it there, was it any discussion about, from their level about, I guess, presuming that the city commission's going to pass whatever they represent in their budget?
I did not get a sense one way or the other. It was more of a staff update to the governing body, so I don't know that I got a good sense of feedback from the governing body about the level of support of moving in that direction, or moving in the consultant-type direction either.
So, do you have additional meetings scheduled, or, I mean, is there a time that they're going to make a decision, or is it something that...
We do. So we actually are meeting later this week, on Thursday, to kind of continue the conversations, to figure out kind of the details of what the proposal would look like, so that we can get to a point where we can present, we can present both of those options to both governing bodies and see which direction you all would ultimately like to go.
Thank you.
So we're getting closer to a place where we can kind of present that full alternative plan to you all for consideration, but we probably still have a few more staff meetings that are going to be required in order to get that to a place we can, we can bring that back for you all to fully consider a couple different options.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for the update.
Yeah.
Item B, we're pleased to give you notice of a grant award from the Kansas Corporation Commission regarding the infrastructure investment job back, job axe application. Mike?
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Back in December of '23, the governing body authorized staff to submit three applications for two grant opportunities. One grant submission was the, was part of the bipartisan infrastructure law section, preventing outages and enhancing the resilience of the electric grid. The two other submitted grants were to build Kansas' matching grant fund fiscal year 2024. The KCC staff noted, so KCC notified our staff that one of the three applications was approved by the KCC and is pending the, pending final approval of Department of Energy's final approval of that. The total request of the grant was for $1,075,038.94, with the Department of Energy covering $724,745.37, and then the matching amount that's required with the federal grant. It's actually coming from the KCC, in the amount $350,293.57. So, me, the city, Garden City, will not have to fund anything for this grant, assuming that everything gets approved, and it's my understanding that when the Department of Energy released these, they put the KCC in charge and making sure everything is going just fine, so far as I know, there's no reason that we won't receive the funding to move forward with that. This area that we're going to do improvements in is in the northeast, we call it the Northeast Underground Distribution Improvement District, and I think there was a map attached to your packet. It includes replacing underground cable that's about 35, 40, 50 years old, some old transformers that we call my front transformer, with dead front transformers, and all new cable and conduit. So it'd be pretty expensive. It'll also convert that voltage area from the 2,400 volts to the 12.5 system, so very good, good, good information. Any questions on any of that? Pretty excited about that, right? It was pretty...
Yeah, that's, yeah, well, congratulations.
Great community.
Yeah, I want to make sure that I mention Casey Quintana and Kent Potorf. They did 99% of all of the labor.
Well, tell them thank you.
Tell them thank you, yeah. That's awesome.
Sounds good, I'll let them know.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
All right. Items C through F are staff reports, and the staff stands ready to answer questions if you have any on any of those reports, or if you want to make comment on any of them.
Just great to see that that was a record number of deployments that we had for the month of February, so I think the 76-seat passenger plane that's coming in is helping, so continue to see great things at the airport as we complete the terminal, so.
Yes. It's a record over the other leap year.
Oh, there you go. Yeah.
And an amount bigger than, yeah, one day would account for.
That's right.
It's a legit record.
It's, it is.
We were discussing that with Rochelle at lunch, so, yeah, we can take credit for that beyond the extra day of the month.
I'm assuming when she said the DART committee met, so is that like when they would have to tranquilize an animal? I was going to ask her about it at lunch, and I totally forgot, but...
I don't know.
Okay. She said the DART committee had met, and I was like, I was going to ask her.
She, and Kristi may be in the holding room, and if she is, she can...
No, she's coming. Oh, here she is. I'm sorry, Kristi. I was going to ask you at lunchtime, I was, I'm assuming that's if an animal gets loose, or you said that the DART committee met for practice, and I didn't know if it was an acronym, because you guys have a lot of those too, so.
We have a DART team?
DART team, yeah.
For helping out on animal stations, whether that be for medical procedures or otherwise.
Okay, thank you.
Thursday night, local pub.
Yeah, no.
Very competitive.
We'll talk to chief about that when we...
Yeah, right, right.
Thank you, Kristi. Meetings of note, under items, item eight, I will make you aware, learned last week that the dates for this year's version of a Western Kansas congressional reception are a little bit different. There's the, there's going to be dates in April that we need to add to this list, and I'm not exactly sure on those. Will be a gathering in Dodge City with representatives from our congressional delegation's staffs, more than likely. But then, as the city of Garden City and a community, along with some of our partners locally, will be traveling to Washington DC on June 10th and 11th, there'll be some staff that will be represented from Chamber and Economic Development Board and staff. Traditionally, the mayor and vice mayor join this trip if their schedules allow, and that's it. Just one difference is those meetings would be the 10th and 11th, which are Tuesday and a Wednesday. Traditionally, those have been on a Monday and a Tuesday, just so situational awareness. We'll get some finalized schedules on those and information out, but both of those meetings at this point in time seem to have been, seem to have been set. Item 9A is the appropriation ordinance. If approved, it would be ordinance number 2599-2024A.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve appropriation ordinance number 2599-2024A.
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
10A is a 130 public hearing. It's not quite yet 130, so if it's all right, we'll move on to item B. This is a nuisance resolution, a motor vehicle nuisance resolution, and if approved, it would be Resolution 3107-2024. Trent?
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. So 503 North Taylor has an inoperable vehicle. It's a blue vehicle under that tarp, but we've sent out two notices to the property owners, one February 1st, 2024, and one February 2021, 2024. No contact has been made, either by them or any communication in any other form from us. The alternative before you go days, governing body may approve the attached resolution or may not approve the attached resolution. If you vote to approve the attached resolution, the fiscal note associated with that would be assessed the property, and staff's recommendation is to approve alternative number one.
Mayor, I move that we approve the attached resolution.
I second.
Okay, it's been motioned second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12A, the governing body is asked to consider the Garden City Electric Department to be the electric service provider for property annexed into the boundaries of the city of Garden City by ordinance number 2975-2024. Mike?
Yes, good afternoon again, Mayor and Commissioners. On February 6th, 2024, the governing body annexed real property into the city's boundaries with ordinance number 2975-2024, as per property owner's request. This property that was annexed into the city was within certified territory of a retail electric supplier, specifically Wheaton Electric Cooperative Incorporated. Pursuant to KSA 66-1,176, the city has an obligation to negotiate for the issuance of a franchise agreement pursuant to KSA 12-2001 with Wheaton Electric, since Wheaton Electric is the retail electric supplier holding the certificate in the annexed area. On February 15th, 2024, Mr. Jim McVeigh, the Assistant General Manager and General Counsel to Wheaton Electric, notified the city via an email to Ming-Mark Muirhead, the Director of Public Works and Utilities, that Wheaton would not be requesting a franchise agreement to serve the property annexed into the city by that ordinance 2975-2024. Also pursuant to KSA 66-1,176, the city is obligated to pay Wheaton for the expense of the retirement of Wheaton facilities on the property and two times the previous 12 months annual revenue. There are currently three streetlights as part of a network of other streetlights that are being served by Wheaton Electric. These streetlights provide lighting for portions of Mary Street as part of the annexation, and the city has agreed to pay Wheaton $526.62 as invoiced for two years of lost revenue for those three streetlights. KSA 66-1,176 requires the governing body to consider a minimum of 11 factors when making the selection of an electric service provider. These factors are limited, are not limited, to the following. A, the public convenience and necessity. B, rates of various suppliers. C, desires of customer or customers to be served. D, the economic impact to the suppliers. E, economic impact to the customers of the suppliers. F, the supplier's operation ability to serve the annexed area. G, avoiding wasteful duplication of facilities. H, avoiding unnecessary encumbrance to the landscape. I, preventing waste of materials and natural resources. J, proposals from any real estate, any real electric, any retail electric supplier holding a certificate in the annexed area, which would be Wheaton. And K, whether to select them in the public interest as it relates to all factors considered by the city. Typically, what we do is, when Wheaton Electric does want a franchise agreement, I present all of these factors pertaining to the city. Wheaton Electric would present their factors as they see it, and then the governing body would make a decision at a later date. I'm more than happy to go through all of this, the remaining information, if you, if you want me to, if you don't, that's fine. The, if you don't, that'd be fine. So what we could do is, the governing body may choose or ask for additional information for consideration to make the selection of the electric service provider. Your alternatives today would be, the governing body may choose to ask for additional information for consideration to make the selection of the electric service provider, or alternative to, the governing body may further discuss the 11 factors and consider findings of fact and conclusions about selecting a retail supplier at a subsequent meeting. Staff recommends that the governing body further discuss the 11 factors and consider findings of fact and conclusions about selecting a retail selector, a retail electric supplier at a subsequent meeting. So what we would do is, we would come back, the city attorney would prepare findings of fact, you would either say yes to agree with those or you don't, and then make a decision. On the fiscal note, the city of Garden City Electric Department or other provider, if another provider is selected to serve the property pursuant to that KSA 66-1,176, 8.5% of the gross electrical energy sales revenue obtained from that property will be paid to Wheaton Electric on an annual basis for a period of 10 years. After 10 years, the payment to Wheaton Electric will automatically stop. And I'm more than happy to answer any questions, if you have any, or I'd be happy to read through the whole thing if you'd like me to do that.
Mike says that invoice in addition to, or does that invoice have to be paid first on the 560...
We would automatically go ahead and start that process, Mr. Mayor, to pay that, and then if you chose not to have us serve it, you selected someone else, we would, Wheaton would refund that back.
Okay.
If they were selected.
Okay. So at this point, because they've chosen not to, then they don't have to, they won't be presented in the, the finding of facts, is that correct? So it'll just be the city...
So it'll just be the city presenting?
Right. The city attorney will put together that that says, you know, I presented the city's, Wheaton chose not to have a franchise agreement, therefore take it for city. Questions?
Mayor, I make a motion that we discuss further the 11 factors and consider findings of fact and conclusions about selecting a retail electric supplier at a subsequent meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Mayor, I think now it's time for the 130 public hearing and this is a public hearing for consideration of annexation for a portion of Jenny Barker Road by ordinance brought before the governing body. And if approved, it would be ordinance number 2977-2024. I think the appropriate steps would be to open the public hearing. Staff can present the background and then members of the public would have a chance to give testimony at the conclusion of, anybody here to speak on the item, you could close the public hearing and then the commission should take up discussion and deliberation.
Okay.
So, open the public hearing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor Commissioners, on August 21st, 2023, the city of Garden City received a written request from Finney County requesting the city of Garden City annex a portion of Jenny Barker Road into the city's boundaries. The annexation area is generally located along 2915 North Jenny Barker Road for a distance of approximately 4,000 feet. As required by state statute, a plan for extension of municipal services for proposed annexation has been provided. The governing body shall make their determination of advisability based on the following criteria as required by state statute. Those are the 16 criteria that are listed in the memo. Your alternatives are the governing body may approve the ordinance to annex real property or the governing body may not approve the ordinance. The governing body approve the ordinance to annex real property. And then I would like to note that at a subsequent meeting, we will bring forward an ordinance for the, for that portion of Jenny Barker Road.
Okay. Do I hear any public comment that anyone would like to come up and address? And just for the record, just that your name.
Thank you. My name's Ray Hyman. I'm a zoning property owner, property. I'm just here to wonder what type of development is going to go across the road from. That's my basic concern or just want me to know.
So you're on the west side of Jenny Barker Road. The plans at this point in time by the owners of the property is a residential.
Multi.
Multi.
Multi residential. Single family or just?
Multi-family.
Multi-family.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the hearing. Okay.
Mayor, I move that we approve the ordinance to annex real property.
I'll make a second to approving ordinance number 2977-2024.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Ready for item B? The governing body is, or 12B, I'm sorry. The governing body is asked to consider and approve minor changes to infrastructure improvement agreement with Maverick Inc.
Yes, Mayor Commissioners, on March 5th, 2024, the governing body authorized an infrastructure improvement agreement with Maverick Incorporated. Maverick Incorporated is under contract to purchase certain real property located on East Mary Street, which will be developed into a commercial property. The city desires to moders, modify certain geometric design elements related to infrastructure for a small portion of East Mary Street adjacent to the proposed development and desires to work to be performed by the contractors who will argue me on the side of doing the work for Maverick. This work shall generally consist of the realignment of the chicane, is what it's called, that kind of little, kind of a little bit of an S curve there, on Mary Street and realignment of the north curb line on East Mary Street and it will widen that road surface. After Maverick reviewed the agreement that the commission approved back on March 5th, they had some very minor corrections they would like to have done to it. After review with the city attorney's office and with staff support, we agreed to accept the proposed changes and suggested two additional modifications contained in paragraph six and one in paragraph seven to the agreement that is attached, showing the changes for the governing body's consideration today. The memo says the Maverick changes are in blue and the city ordinances are in red. I think the copy that you got are actually, theirs are in green and the city's is red, so I apologize for that error there. Your alternatives would be the governing body may choose to accept the infrastructure improvement agreement with Maverick Incorporated with the modifications. Or number two, the governing body may choose not to accept the infrastructure improvement agreement with Maverick Incorporated with the modifications. And staff recommends that item number one, alternative one, the governing body accept the infrastructure improvement agreement with Maverick with the modifications. Fiscal note, the city has no fiscal impact by accepting this agreement. The, that agreement was, if you would choose to do this, then we agreed to pay what we would pay in the original agreement. And I'm happy to answer any questions on this.
My only question is, is we made, so they made modifications and we made some minor changes as well, so it goes back to them, them for approval or to sign off on then?
Yes, we sent that to them so they would see the changes as may be presented to the city commission today.
Okay.
They have agreed to those.
Okay.
What we'll do is, when their CEO signs it and dates it, then it will go back at that time.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I move that we accept the infrastructure improvement agreement with Maverick Incorporated with the modifications.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Mike, I just kind of one quick comment as far as emailing. There was a couple of emails listed on here. Just making sure we have the, just what, I'm concerned with all the fraud going on out there. If we follow up with the phone number and stuff or transactions and things like that, just to be cautious on that.
Yes, we will.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Item 12C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the distribution of the downtown development funds for 220 North Main Street. John?
Good afternoon. Brian and Julie Rupp applied to the downtown development fund for an interior remodel on the second quarter located at 220 North Main Street. The unit is currently vacant but will be remodeled to create two apartment units. An approved building permit issued within the last 30 days with site and build plans is a required document to prove eligibility for the downtown development fund program. However, the applicant would like to be considered for the program prior to obtaining building plans and a building permit. Staff determined that eligible work includes demolition, professional fees, and general remodeling in order to accommodate the two apartment units in this space. The total cost for the eligible work are estimated to be $219,167. Based on the project scope and design plan submitted, staff concluded a score of 16 points. Project was awarded one point for addressing a fire, safety, or accessibility issue, five points for being vacant for more than a year, two points for 25% or less of the project cost to be used for facade improvements, seven points for 80% of the project costs used for second story units, and another point awarded for potentially drawing in customers from the surrounding area. A score of 16 points calculates a potential reimbursement of 32% of the eligible project cost or $70,133. All application materials, including the reimbursement score sheet, are attached. This is the second downtown development fund application of 2024. The governing body approved $11,578 to be distributed for the project at 325 North Main Street on February 6th, 2024. As a result, the downtown development fund has a current unawarded balance of $188,422. Based on the, based on the potential reimbursement score determined by staff, approving the downtown development fund application will leave a remaining balance of $118,289. The proposed use, the proposed use conforms with the Garden City Comprehensive Plan, Downtown Plan, and zoning regulations. There are three alternatives before you today. The governing body may fund the award at $70,133. Two, the governing body may fund the award at a different amount. Or three, the governing body may not fund the award of the downtown development fund application. Staff is unable to recommend, unable to make a recommendation. There is a fiscal note. The downtown development fund currently has an unawarded balance of $188,422. Based on the potential reimbursement score determined by staff, approving the downtown development fund application will leave a remaining balance of $118,289.
So I have a question. So if they, so they don't end up making the final, making all the changes, so is, is there a period of time that they have to use the funds? Or is it like, I mean, do they have a year or? Because I know this ties up to funds and if they don't use them.
So the funds are distributed after it's been final and.
Right.
But they have 180 days to start.
Just 180 days, okay. Thank you.
As far as, as far as the applications that have been submitted, how, and there's really no plan to gauge, how do you gauge the percentage of fire and safety to be used on this building at 25% without any fire and safety plans?
We did look at some of the cost estimates and it did address like ladder asbestos remediation if there were any, so that's one way to look at it for fire and safety.
Yeah, I just. I guess I would be, I mean, I'm not, I'm not against the dollars, it's just the fact that we have insufficient or not enough information to make these determinations. How do, how do we gauge that without a set of plans on? And I get it's the cart before the horse because this happens in my office all the time. Fire and safety and accessibility with it being an upstairs lobby or upstairs apartments, access to that without, you know, the width, the right width of stairs and rails and all that. And then fire safety, which becomes fire sprinklers or smoke alarms and that type of things without your initial plans. I mean, I'm just. Is there a way that, I mean, these, these can be contingent upon those plans being submitted at a later date, but is that, so I'm asking, is that the next step for this process? Or how are we going to determine that these dollars are going to get spent on some of these items?
So, couplings, the point value for the 25% or less is one.
My.
So I think you can address fire, safety anytime. We've got additional protection for the corridor, which right now it's not inside this lab, lab and plaster on Brian's side. It's cleared off, so if we get some protection on that wall, we've got transom windows in the hallway, those are going to be closed in. So to give it the one point, I think you could probably pull some fire, life safety, any kind of fire protection system whatsoever in there. To do with what has been submitted, which is an estimate, I think based on his contractor versus plans and maybe drilling in a little bit more into the details. I would suggest if you are willing to do any kind of a contingent based on what is finally submitted, the same point system could apply with a criteria that was identified. As the point, points were defined by staff already, those same points would be given if the scope of work stayed the same. If it didn't, based on architects or whatever is designed, then I think they would amend it. And if it was for cost for more points or more distribution of funds, we'd bring that before the governing body because that was a change for what we considered today.
I guess I wouldn't, for me, I wouldn't approve it at this time just because there's no building plans and that's one of the required documents to provide the eligibility for us to provide the funding. I mean, once, I think once that's been submitted, I would, I myself, as a commissioner, would probably move forward on this, but not at this time for me.
Yeah, and to add why we brought it today, we knew it didn't meet the criteria, but where you guys are basically the administer, administrators of the funds, we want to make sure that you heard from someone that was trusting them. So that's why we brought it to you in an unfinished state.
I would rather, for me, I'd rather see a completed application. If we, for me, if, if we approve something like this, then we'll be stepping through more of these where it's like, well, I didn't complete it. Here it is, you know, please fund it. I'd rather see a completed application brought before us with it scored from the plans and through everything. That gives us a better idea of how to approve it from, from my standpoint.
And I agree. I think the plan has a lot of merit, but again, this idea of those, those funds are theirs and if you tie those funds up on a plan that's incomplete or really hasn't gone through all of the steps, then that makes those dollars not available for someone else who has walked through all of the steps and has done the due diligence. I mean, I like the whole plan. I think it's, there's some really great ideas, but I agree with Commissioner Sessna that, you know, this is probably needs to be in a further state, so.
So I make a motion that we not.
Let's, let's.
Go ahead.
Yeah, let's hear David. Yes. Just state your name for the record, please.
I'm Brian Rupp.
Hey, Brian.
I'm the applicant. Part of, I guess, you know, I guess we could call the plans, we do have, you know, drawn up plans. They just haven't been formally stamped plans. The feasibility of doing this project is 100% contingent on whether or not we would get funding for it. So we wanted to know, you know, go through the process and where we would score and if something that we've done. We would start the process, one of the last step of getting the stated plans, you know, in motions, while we were approved for it. If we're not approved for it, we're not going to do the project because it's, it's just, at my age, for what we're wanting to do, it would draw out the amount of time for, for us to be paying for it. It'd get me into my retirement years. It's not something I'm really looking to do. So it's something we would like to do. We just didn't move forward with the other part because we, as we talked, we kind of, we had all the plans done up, we just didn't have the stamped plans. And we were a little hesitant. Mainly, we wanted to know the score and where we would kind of be at and kind of the process. They had to have the score presented to you before they could just give us a score. And we just, we were kind of a little hesitant to not know for sure where it was going to be before we spent several thousand dollars getting stamped plans. That's just why we took this step. So just wanted to let you know kind of where we're at with it. I mean, if it's approved, contingent on getting the stamped plans, we'll set that in motion this week.
I appreciate you coming up, Brian. And I know, I mean, your, your project is, is a, you know, it's a good applicant for this process and I don't think that, you know, it's just the incomplete form on what we need as far as the steps to kind of move, move forward and get approval. So we, once that is done, or like you said, you haven't done, we can get that through the Neighborhood Development Services Department and they can then present it to us and we would be glad to go that route and look at it then, so. But I, I mean, I wouldn't stop. I think you've got a good project, so.
And another nice thing about the plan is that if you look at all of the vendors, core Garden City, downtown Garden City, I mean, our heating or electrical or plumbing or flooring or windows, I mean, all that, those businesses are in Garden City's core.
Yeah. And I'm hopeful, I mean, I know for sure NDS has been helping you out along the way with the steps on the processes and taking these, you know, precautions on what to do, what not to do and those things so that you don't paint yourself in the corner, so to speak. But yeah, I think, I mean, I think from their conversations and, you know, helping you with the process, we can, we can move forward with this, but we just need that data, so.
Okay.
Does that help? Not right away, but it'll.
No, I know. I know, it is.
Yeah, I know it does.
Yes.
But, I mean, once we start opening the doors on this and kind of, you know, it just, then the next guy is trying to move forward quicker and things get slipped through the cracks and that's just what we're kind of trying to mitigate, so. But, so. Appreciate you coming. Thanks, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Ready to move on to item B. The governing body is asked to consider and approve the distribution of the downtown development funds for 109. Development Funds for 109 Grant.
No action.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Donnie Huber has applied to the Downtown Development Fund for the interior remodel located at 109 Grant Ave. The unit is currently vacant, but the future location of the individual offices and retail space. A building permit was issued after completing the building review process on January 3, 2024. Staff determined the eligible work includes demolition, professional fees, and general remodeling in order to accommodate offices and a retailer in the space. The total cost for the eligible worker is estimated to be $411,528. Based on the project's scope and design plans submitted, staff concluded a score of eight points. The project was awarded one point for 25% or less of project costs addressing ADA restrooms, four points for allowing a new retail business, two points for allowing 25% or less of project costs to be used for facade improvements, and another point awarded for potentially drawing customers in from the surrounding area. A score of eight points calculates a prudential reimbursement of 16% of the eligible cost or $65,884.84. All application materials, including the reimbursement score sheet, are attached. This is the third Downtown Development Fund application in 2024. The governing body approved $11,578 to be distributed to the project at 325 North Main Street on February 6, 2024. As a result, the Downtown Development Fund has an unawarded balance of $188,422. Based on the reimbursement, potential reimbursement score determined by staff, approving the Downtown Development application will leave a remaining balance of $118,289. The proposed retail use conforms with the Garden City Comprehensive Plan, Downtown Plan, and zoning regulations. There are three alternatives in front of you. The governing body may fund the award at $65,884.84. Two, the governing body may fund the award at a different amount. Three, the governing body may fund the, may not fund the award for the Downtown Development Fund application. And staff recommends the governing body award $65,884.84. And the fiscal note, Downtown Development Fund currently has an unawarded balance of And with the approval of this application, it will leave a remaining balance of $188,422.
Oh, if the second, I see, yeah. If the second application.
The applicant could not be here, but I'm happy to help answer any questions that you guys might have regarding that.
So my concern on this one, and it's kind of similar to the other one on addressing ADA, this one is, is to do with ADA, the other one was to do with fire and safety. So looking at the plans, rather a better, better plan, but this still states that it's a progress print on the title block. But addressing the ADA portion of this plan, to me, differentiates to the construction that's going on out there right now. I haven't been inside, but a wheelchair accessible into this building is going to be tough to get down to the potential ADA bathrooms that have been upgraded to meet ADA, but getting there is going to be tough. So how do we, I guess, discover those options and figure out if those are being ratified now or, and if these plans are being constructed to a stamped set of drawings rather than a progress print?
So hopefully I can answer your question here, but based on the, the project costs and how much the ADA remake, the ADA remodeling costs, and that's how we determine that one point? So, you know, that was something we discussed during this process, a stat that we discussed during this process of how to properly calculate what addresses ADA. And based on the, the quote, the budget from the applicant and conversations, it was determined that it was less than 25% of the total building costs. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I know the process on how do we, how we, you know, get the points and, and score, but looking at the plans itself, the ADA access down to those ADA facilities is, to me, incorrect. So whether, whether if you guys can tell me that you have the stamped plans that you've reviewed from and say that this, these are the incorrect documents that you have in, in your office that you've reviewed and, and they're constructing it onsite per those plans, then I would feel better about, you know, the process of, I mean, I'm not against awarding, this is a good project to award these dollars to, but I'm just, I'm just looking out for the tenant as well, the applicant, so that they are informed that of these kind of, you know.
Yeah, and so I, we should have addressed in our memo, 109 Grant Avenue is downstairs. They just recently re modeled, split 107 and 109, so 109 has no access to upstairs, which would be 107.
Basement or are you talking second level?
I'm talking just.
Main level? Okay, main, main level, yeah.
But this whole, this application is complete and everything has been approved as far as the whole process has been completed.
Correct.
So Mayor, I'm not entirely sure. Could you clarify a little bit of what you're, you're against here?
Well, I'm not against anything. I'm just wanting to make sure that the construction, this is on grant, main level, correct? So the construction that's, I mean, directly across my office that I see every day is not, if I'm looking at the building on, straight on out of my window of my office, that door to the bottom side into the building is not built that way. It is recessed. And to me, that ADA access into that doorway with accessibility, it hinders that. So whether, I just, I'm trying to clarify that these plans are, are different from what the plans they submitted for permit and stamped or if.
So I pulled up the plans as we were talking, the plans are stamped by a firm. The question that you're giving to is the door without field verifying. We can check that front entrance, that should be happening on inspection. But as far as a code footprint and floor plan stamped by a licensed Kansas architect firm, they are. So it might be a technicality, but to me, it doesn't, it doesn't detract from bulk bathrooms or how ADA compliant access to is increased from what it was. So we'd still get the same points even if a technicality of an inspection was done incorrectly or missed on a plan review. The fact is they've made ADA improvements, so we'd still get that point, if that makes sense.
It makes sense, yeah. ADA improvements into the bathroom or the bathroom itself is, is updated ADA, but accessibility to those bathrooms is my concern as well. But I'm not, I'm not opposed to the dollars that funded that, that, you know, for this project. I'm just, you know, I think, just for, in order to get transparency and clarity on this project and this, and based off of these plans is kind of prudent on what we, what we see or what I see, obviously, so.
If I can interject on that, what you're pointing out is something that you as your profession would know as well as the grant foundation of the plan. No one else would, would know these things. So you're talking a code technicality that we'll work through on, on the inspection side. As far as the overall scope of project, whether if you were not in your profession, you would be awarded it based on what they're presenting. And I think that's the focus. I think our, our concern on ADA will work through that. I think what we're presenting to you today is what the scope of the project is and it's my department's job to make sure that they follow through with the adopted credits regulations to the best part of the business.
Correct. And then, and that's why I think why we have different views on the panel up here is to give different views in this, in the aspects and areas that we are, expertise is in. But I, I mean, I have conversations with your office all the time and we just seem that we got to talk through these items and, and work through them together. And I'm just, I'm looking out for the owner and the, you know, the building as well. It's just kind of, are we having these conversations? It's, it's just kind of being, given a little bit more clarity on kind of what we're, what we're, you know, asked from us to approve these applications and just like the one that we just discussed before, incomplete plans and things, but this to me is an incomplete plan as well, just because it says progress print on it. So if it would have been stamped, I would have probably been a little bit more.
Probably what is in your packet versus what we have in our software. The one I'm looking at is stamped.
Correct. So based off of our decision making on this is just a different perception, perception on my view.
And this could be what the owner submitted as his plan versus what to, for the funds versus what the contractor submitted for.
Sure. I just wanted to make sure that that's, that you and I'm, you know, I know, I trust you all on doing, you know, if you had the right plans, I just, I'm just wanting the clarification that you do have the stamped plans so that.
We do.
Okay.
Yeah, Mayor, I move that we approve the fund award at $65,844.44. Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passed.
And the last item before this, do we need to have a motion?
I don't believe so. No action was taken unless the commission has a different opinion.
I didn't see.
The first downtown development item.
No action was taken.
So the, one of the alternatives is not to fund the award? I don't.
I, I don't think that we were saying we were going to fund the award. I think we just weren't going to take any action until, because funding would say.
I didn't hear among the commission a will to take an action to reject the application and I didn't sense the will to approve the application. And so when you thanked him for his time and he left, I interpreted that as no action was taken. But if you want to come back and revisit the item, you can make a motion.
I think we'll wait till he completes his application, bring it forward, and then we'll take action on it. So we could tape, we could table it. I mean, we could table it and take no action, so I'm, I'm fine with that. I don't think we have to take.
I mean, it wasn't one of the, it wasn't one of the alternatives, taking no action, but I think that.
Right.
I think that's, you know, tabling or taking no action actually would be one of the alternatives.
So I would just say the consensus would be just the item was, no action taken.
Are we ready to move on to item E? I mean, tabling it, like, tabling it technically requires somebody to take a motion and make a second to bring it off the table at a future meeting. So I think if you're, if it's the intent of the commission and you can get advice from the city attorney, but the, if it's the intent of the commission that you would like to entertain this application at a later date when maybe the information is more complete, that you just take no action at this point in time and it gets placed on a future agenda if he brings it back.
Okay.
As long as you're on the same page?
Yep. Yes.
Item E, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the recommendation to the United States Department of Transportation to expect, to accept the proposal from American Airlines to provide essential air service at Garden City Regional Airport.
Good afternoon. Every two years, the United States Department of Transportation releases a request for proposals seeking airlines to propose for service at Garden City Regional Airport. The RFP was released on February 7th. We did receive one proposal by American Airlines and their proposal included 14 weekly round trips with a 65-seat regional jet. The airline does have the discrepancy to engage an aircraft to what is serving us now as a 76-seat aircraft, but no minimum of 65-seat regional aircraft. The subsidy, PUCO subsidy is $5,897,640. That funding call comes from the US, United States Department of Transportation and no level funding is allocated to the essential air service program. The, there is additional documentation in the package information. The Airport Advisory Board did review this information at their March meeting and they did also provide recommendation for approving, to recommend the United States Department of Transportation to accept the proposal from American Airlines.
I make the motion we approve the recommendation to the United States Department of Transportation to accept the proposal from American Airlines to provide essential air service at Garden City Regional Airport.
I second.
Okay, there's been a motion and second. Any further discussion?
I will tell you, this, the information included in this was, I mean, was really, was nominally informative, but really fascinating about how the whole process works. So I knew it was a lot to put together, but yeah, this was a kind of a, it was a really neat opportunity to see, so thank you.
So on this applicant, or not application, but this contract, does it hinder us from any other contracts that maybe, that we could be looking at in the future for expansion on other air services?
So the essential air service program is restrictive in nature to, as the federal government is providing a subsidy essentially to an airline to provide community's airline service, to attract another airline would also require subsidy. And so now you're competing who's providing that subsidy and then you're also competing against the same passenger pool. So we would, that would be restrictive in one way. There are some options that we could do as far as expanding air service within the essential air service program, however, that's more than, less than daily service. And then also with the airline industry being very expensive, we're also going to be looking at some subsidies going into that additional service as well as, or a minimum revenue guarantee. So it doesn't totally restrict us, but it does have some challenges, but we're always looking ways to meet those challenges and expand the air service up here.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passed.
Thank you, Rochelle. Item F, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the Garden City Fire Department applying for an assistance to firefighters grant for acquisition of a tanker truck.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. The primary goal of the AFG grant program is to meet firefighter, firefighting and emergency service needs for fire departments and non-affiliated emergency service organizations. This year, there, there's approximately $324 million allocated for the program, but there are projected 2,000 awards being used, being issued. The fire department currently has two tanker trucks responding out of two fire stations. With stations re-destruction underway, staff are trying to add third tankers to respond for water supply. Having the option of a third tanker, we can adjust our response matrix to account for multiple incidents or have more readily available resources. Fires of all kinds in the county require us to have resources available immediately upon arrival due to the time and distance. With this grant submission, the Garden City Fire Department would be requesting funds for up to $700,000 for the purchase of the tanker truck. The city would, the city could be responsible for 10% share of the cost of $70,000. If the city is unsuccessful in obtaining the grant funding, it would be anticipated that the full cost of the apparatus will be experienced in the near future in conjunction with the completion of the third fire station. The tanker truck is one, tanker truck is one of the one identified apparatuses to purchase from the station with this cost coming from the point three sales tax revenues. The alternative before you is the governing body may approve. The governing body may authorize staff to apply for the AFG grant. Alternative two, the governing body may deny the grant submission for other guidance. Staff recommends alternative. One, applying for the assistance of firefighter grant. This code is the AFG grant requires a 10% cost share equals $70,000 if approved. The city's shared cost will be, will come from this point three sales tax fund. We have to answer your questions. Do you have any?
Mayor, I move that we authorize staff to apply for the assistance to firefighters grant.
I second.
Okay, there's been a motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passed.
Here's a plea, then you'll get your grant, so that's great.
Item G, the governing body is asked to consider and approve applying for a fire protection and safety grant for a new smokehouse.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. The Garden City Fire Department seeks support through the Fire Prevention and Safety Grant to enhance our community's safety measures. Our current smokehouse, an invaluable tool for fire prevention and education, is, is no longer roadworthy, posing a safety risk as it's detached from the frame. With the grant, we aim to procure a cityyard smokehouse equipped with essential features to better serve our community. This upgraded unit will come complete with quiet generator for enhanced portability and wheelchair ramp with an onboard storage compartment for community protection. An multimedia system including TV, DVD player, facilitating aging education sessions. Recognizing the diversity of our community, the new smokehouse will be equipped with smoke alarms specifically designed for individuals with hearing impairments. Moreover, the injury prevention package will encompass education on bicycle safety, motor vehicle and pedestrian safety, firearm safety, and water safety. The Garden City Fire Department is committed to maintaining the highest standard of the safety and education. And with the support of the Fire Prevention and Safety Grant we aspire to acquire a modern and versatile smokehouse that will significantly contribute to the mission of our, to our missions of safeguarding our community. The alternative before you is to approve, the governing body may authorize staff to apply for the Fire Prevention and Safety Grant. Alternative two, the governing body may deny the grant submission for other guidance. Recommendation, the staff has recommended the governing body approve or authorize staff to apply for the Fire Prevention Grant. If you have any questions, do you have?
So will this still be immobile? It'll still be, okay, on trailer?
With the sprinkler prop, this is how a fire sprinkler system works, smoke detectors, DVDs, and then I'll be able to smoke it up so they can follow through likely existing one, a little larger, a little more costly than the previous one, but 20-plus years out of the first one, it was donated to us by the local builders.
Yeah.
It's time to move to the new one, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I move that we authorize you. Yeah, I move that we authorize you, the staff, to apply for a fire prevention and safety grant.
I second.
Okay, has been motion in second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion pass.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item H is the consent agenda. If there aren't any items that you'd like to pull off, the appropriate motion would be to approve consent agenda items H1 through 4.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda items 1 through 4.
Second.
Has been motion in second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion pass.
Includes the business, Mayor, we're ready for the question reports.
Okay, so first up, we'll go with Commissioner Andrew.
Yeah, so this was a very productive meeting, that I really appreciate the discussion and how everything was put together for all of the staff goals, or the commission goals, and so thank you for the time and that, all the time that was spent getting all that organized and put together and something that was really, I thought, really well, really well done. I was very excited, you know, when James Southern, 21 years on the firefighting, you know, with our, with the fire department, and I just, that's an incredible faithfulness, not only to Garden City, but also just to his profession. You know, and Levita, I just, you know, I really, one of the words that you read, Mayor, was, when the wisdom, and I'll tell you, there is so much wisdom from the people who do that work every single day, and all of the people that she took care of and really guided and, you know, was an inspiration to, to keep going and pushing, because that process is not easy. So I just wanted to make sure and honor them. I'm really excited to, congratulations to Mike on, I tell you, writing an application that's fully funded rarely happens, and so I thought that was really exciting. And I know that there are lots of things like that with staff, and incredible amount of work goes into those applications, and thank you for giving, you know, shout-outs to those who do the work, and, you know, that we as a community really reap that. I really appreciate just all of the work that's really going in to make this a, really a standout city, and so with that, I just wanted to say thank you to the citizens of Garden City and enjoy, I didn't realize it was the first day of spring, but looking forward to a wet spring and a very wonderful cooler summer. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Cessna.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo, very good pre-meeting, really establishing and getting our goals set. You know, we work on the, have staff work on those for the, you know, a duration of 12 to 18 months, but some of those are a lot larger, and we kind of see those kind of take form and shape over a longer period of time, kind of like something, you know, we had a goal on, for the city commission of working to get a four-year university or some type of collaboration here in the community, and I attended the announcement the other day at Garden City Community College of the partnership between the community college and Newman University on their collaboration on three new college degree programs, and Senator Moran was there and announced the funding, eventual funding, especially if they pass the funding bills, but the funding of $1.2 million to help the implementation of that new program. So it really focuses, and that's one of the goals, or has been the goal of the commission, is to really work to keep our, our youth here locally in the community, so they can get their four-year degree and stay here local. Also, Senator Moran also mentioned and announced the funding for the expansion of US 5400 from the airport to connect to the divided highway that's going in from Dodge City to Simmiron, so great news on that, and something that we as commissioners have been putting in our goals and working on, so exciting to see. He said that it was expected to start in 2026, so that part of it, so great to see that continue to move forward. Also wanted to mention, spring cleanup is coming around the corner, it starts April 1st, there's a map on the website, I know our, our media department has put some information out on social media, but check out the map so that you know when to set out your items, and they can be picked up. Also, I attended the legislative coffee on Saturday, and a lot of good discussion on where the state legislature is at. Mainly, they're now starting to look at trying to figure out a budget and trying to get that approved and get that through both houses, and then trying to get that by the governor without her vetoing it, but a lot of good discussion during that. I encourage anybody that's interested in what's happening at the state level, attend the legislative coffee that's put on here locally by the Chamber of Commerce. And then all, and then my last thing is just remember to fly local and to shop local, that helps support our community as a, as a regional city in Western Kansas. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So Commissioner Langraff.
So first, I just want to echo what both commissioners said about the goal setting retreat, it's good to have those goals lined out for what will be the near future and the future, even further out future as well, so that way we can shape what the city is doing in the future. Also, I was able to go to the Garden City Community College's event as well for higher education between, announcing the four-year program between the community college and Newman University, and something I just want to echo as well is the fact that Newman is offering these students that graduate from Garden City Community College a $20,000 scholarship, and also having matching Pell and State grants up to $7,500. I believe I saw on the Garden City Journal saying, these students will only cost $750 to be, to go through Newman for the year, so just having enrollment like that is a huge deal for our community, and also allowing our youth to stay here in Garden City, be able to continue their life, and also be able to get these four-year degrees, so I just want to echo both of those two things.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wayne.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Southern, for offering yourself to your community. Being a firefighter requires a lot of sacrifice, particularly sacrifice away from your family, that is a pretty big deal. Additionally, happy spring, with some warmer, hopefully warmer weather rolling in, I would like to encourage you all to go on the D.C. Rec website and look at the activity guide for all of the events coming up, all of the sports seasons that are coming up. Lastly, I think it is a joy to honor Levita, not necessarily for her nine-to-five hours, but her five-to-sometimes past midnight hours, taking refugees to and from Wichita for doctor's appointments on her day off, and there's plenty of family friend stories where she would take their kids to school in the morning and home, just so that the parents could spend more time in overtime. So these are stories that we rarely get to hear, but they're dear and true to my heart because, for, particularly for our family at least, she fought tooth and nail to secure our immigration papers here, so if it weren't for Levita, I would not be sitting up here today. Lastly, a couple weeks ago, I was able to meet with Dr. Ryan Ruda and Scott Kudrowski. I received a tour of their new STEM building and their John Deere building, and sat with some of their discussions, kind of getting an insight of where they're heading the next couple of years, what, where their mission is really focusing to, and it's, there is a beautiful gem here in Garden City, and I'm very excited to see it come to fruition soon. Oh, sorry, and one last thing is a tremendous thank you to our manager, Senator Allen, along with all of our senior staff and extended staff for all of your hard work in typing before expectations, because that is really the bulk of our work. We have the easy job of just throwing out our ideas of what our constituents hear, and we funnel it there, but at the end of the day, it is your staff who spends the long hours figuring out how the heck do we do this? Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I'm not going to repeat whatever Commissioner up here said, ditto on all of our rounds, yeah, especially to our leaderships, first, starting with James and Levita, those tremendous heroes here in our community, so also just like to bring up, I don't have much to bring up other than a couple of more items, just talking about the leadership from our stakeholders here in our community, leadership from staff, from leaders here, just thank you for all the work that you put into the city to make it work the way it does. So just like to bring up volunteers, if you're looking to plug yourself in, Outrun Childhood Obesity starts April 6th, and they're looking for volunteers for water station registration table, course guide, finish line, so contact them if you'd like to just kind of get involved in the community, it's a great way to kind of just get out and enjoy the spring as it starts today. So one last thing, we did get an email on just some concerns with the playgrounds in our community, I think we kind of just maybe will need to look at that as far as an assessment to see what we can do to, you know, maybe resolve some of those issues and, and kind of bring that up in a future, in a future meeting, so with that, I think I have everything covered, so anything else? Thanks, thanks for coming, meeting adjourned.